Check, check, check.
You're Knicks guy, aren't you Fred?
Knicks, yeah. You?
Check two, check two.
We're on, that's who we're playing, the Sixers are playing the Knicks in the first round of the playoffs.
What's the start, tomorrow?
It's Saturday.
Saturday.
Tomorrow's the, uh...
Well, here's the deal, if MB is healthy.
Well, if he's anything, we'll see.
Anyone who wants to stay, please, now would be the time to take your seats. Hi.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
What?
See?
The kids look for this when I come home from council meetings. What'd you do? You robbed already?
Took everything out of there.
I hope the press never gets wind of this.
Okay.
Just a little hygiene before me.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, April eighteenth, six thirty PM. Welcome to the village council meeting for the village of Royal Palm Beach. Could everyone please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please let the record show our members of council are present. And with that, I want to start out this evening with a special recognition to Vice Mayor Jeff Hamera. You know, there are a lot of things that are going on across the state of Florida. There are a lot of things that go on in Tallahassee every year where they seem to be driven to come up with new rules and laws that takes away the local responsibility of local cities or villages. And it's called the Battle of the Home Rule. But I'm proud to recognize Vice Mayor Hamera tonight. Special recognition on behalf of the village of Royal Palm Beach and the village council, Vice Mayor Jeff Hamera has been honored with the 2024 Home Rule Hero Award for his outstanding advocacy efforts throughout 2024 legislative session by the Florida League of Cities. Let's give him a hand. Because we have, what, four hundred and twelve, four hundred and thirteen cities in the state of Florida? And for the Florida League of Cities to acknowledge his contribution, his advocacy to this very important issue to all cities, I think is outstanding. I'd like us to have a quick photo op with the council, please. Okay, we're going to take reports now. And today, there was a Transportation Planning Agency meeting. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. But I can say, report that there were no agenda items that had any direct impact on Royal Palm Beach in our vicinity. They just added some new projects in north and south Flor- uh, Palm Beach County to the tip plan. So beyond that, that was a pretty, it was a quiet meeting today. So Jan, why don't we start with you?
Okay, good evening, everybody. A couple of art and culture things for everybody's attention. On May eleventh, we will celebrate Cultural Diversity Day in Veterans Park from one to six PM. Hope everybody can come out and celebrate with us. The other thing is, this summer, we are happy to host the fourth Shakespeare by the Sea, which is Shakespeare in the Palm, right, in Royal Palm, on July twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth, eight PM. I know that's far away off, but the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is because if you have any artistic performing talent, they want you. And so auditions are taking place.
Really?
Yes. They will take place on May seventh, from six to eight, at the Benjamin Upper School in the gardens. And so...
That's a private school, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, that's where they've got a partnership to have those meetings there.
Okay.
And interested actors are asked to bring a headshot, a resume, prepare a one-to-two-minute Shakespearean monologue. And then rehearsals begin June sixteenth and run every evening from seven to ten PM. And they welcome performers of all identities, ethnicities, and cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds. So I encourage anybody who is thinking of dipping their toe in the water and acting, that they should go try that.
That is really interesting, Diane. We need to make sure we get that in Vector and other places where we can let our citizens know about that opportunity. Thank you.
That's it, that's my report for tonight.
So this Saturday, the Education Advisory Board will be meeting to interview eighteen applicants for our, this year's village scholarships from nine AM until two PM. And in fact, we'll be doing it right here in the conference room. We've got some great candidates again this year, and the majority are from Royal Palm Beach High School. And that, of course, provides us with an opportunity to get more insight into what our young folks are thinking and how they view the future, which, by the way, has most of us walking away feeling much better about the prospects. So that's an exciting activity, and I really appreciate the hard work that the Education Advisory Board has already done in that regard. I attended the Transportation Planning Agency-sponsored event, which was referred to as the South Florida Rail Tour and Site Visit. We wound up going down to Miami Dade using Tri-Rail to get down there. I did not know that Tri-Rail actually had a station right in the airport.
In the airport, yeah.
And it's extremely convenient, it really is. And then we went from there over to downtown Miami, so you can really get around on Tri-Rail if you want. And at the airport, there's another way to get around from terminal to terminal called the Mia mover. And initially, I had no idea what Mia, Mama Mia. Turns out Mia, if you think about it, Miami International Airport, right? Very clever and very effective. So it was really worthwhile seeing what the regional transportation network has and what they're doing to make it even more efficient. There is an affordable housing symposium this Friday, April the twenty-sixth, and it'll be held at TPA headquarters again between eight and three thirty PM. The discussions are going to be about affordable housing principles, design principles, effective local government approaches, but it's also going to include talking to something that we don't hear much about, and that's referred to as the missing middle-class housing requirements. And so there's going to be a shift in that, but of course, then we also will talk about the need for transportation as an integral part of affordable housing. And one of the things we often talk about is transit and the importance of transit, especially dealing with the growing difficulties that we have in traffic congestion. And of course, it's likely to get worse, and it won't get better unless we do something dramatically different. But a lot of people say, well, you're really heavily oriented toward transit. Well, just to prove that I am not exclusively transit-oriented, the Barrett-Jackson Car Auction is ongoing over at the fairgrounds. It'll be winding up with Friday and Saturday. And the reason I say that is because I drive over there. So I can say honestly that you can be an advocate for transit and still love a car. So I'll leave it with you there.
By the way, I do, I will be attending that housing symposium. I think that's an important event. Whenever I talk with people about the question that comes up about affordable housing, I explain, first of all, it's a very complex issue, and it's got several moving parts. And I'm just hopeful to get us moving into a direction where whatever affordable housing solutions we do achieve, that they're permanent, okay? I don't think it makes sense to, you know, have a hundred units built and allocate some number of those units for a temporary period of time, and those units go back on the fair market at some point down the road. So we're not building up any inventory in terms of the affordable housing. But that's just a thought. But it is a complex issue, but it's an important issue for us to look at, seeing what we can do to address it. Anything else, you're done?
Oh, that's it.
Okay.
Hi, yeah, I'd just like to report on this Saturday, there is, ooh, it doesn't sound so good. On this Saturday, there's the Great American Cleanup at the Village Recreation Center we're going to have, and be going around cleaning out various locations, picking up trash. Registration is from seven AM to eight, and the cleanup will be from eight until noon. And I believe there's a lunch afterwards, because I have a teenage high schooler that is going to be out cleaning with me on Saturday. Also, just to remind again, if we can make it, the high school's graduation is on May the fifteenth, and it's at one o'clock at the fairgrounds. And finally, on Monday, I attended a track meet for the Royal Palm Beach High School, where they did pretty well. The boys came in second overall, less than half a point behind Suncoast, so they were really well. And the girls came in sixth, so at least the track team's doing some good stuff. And that's it, thanks for listening.
Good evening, everyone. We had over eight hundred people who came through the cultural, I'm sorry, over at the rec center for our free tax filing that we do at the United Way every year, so it was great to help out a lot of people. Regular season for youth baseball and softball is wrapping up, and playoffs begin on Saturday, and that's over at Bob Marcello and Farron Parks. The Royal Palm Beach Strikers have three weeks left in their youth soccer season, so we're kind of wrapping up as things go. Councilwoman Ruduski did say the Cultural Diversity Day is May eleventh, over at Veterans Park, from one to eight. The shade structure over at Bobby Joe Lautner Park is almost complete, and that's over the playscape out there. So it makes it a lot easier now in the summertime to go out there and play. We have food trucks in concert tomorrow night over at Commons Park, and the band is Dark Side of the Soul, so it is a Pink Floyd band. And then the Green Market on Saturday from nine to one. We did, I did attend a legislative update yesterday from the Economic Council, and they talked about the My Safe Florida Home that we brought up before when we were in Tallahassee. So that was refunded starting July first. Applications will open up again, and what they're going to do is low-income seniors are going to be chosen first. They get a two-week period, July fifteenth, and it's low-income other residents. And then going through in August, you'll have low-income, middle-area people. So they're going to do two-week increments for paying out, and then once the funds are exhausted, they are exhausted. So at least this will help out. And this is up to a $10,000 match when you do home repair stuff for hurricane season, so roofs, windows, and things like that. And then Councilwoman Ruduski and I did attend the Four-Ninety Park Grand Opening, and that's a co-workspace. There are three lovely women who opened it up, and they accommodate for various abilities. So it's a great common workspace over there, and that's in the village it's opened up. And it's great to see how they converted warehouse facility into a very comfortable inviting workspace. So that concludes my report.
You were one of the speakers at that event?
I was, yes, yeah.
Very good, okay.
Good evening. I've got one update for you. The Seminole Palms Park, we've been discussing this this past year. The programs we have over there, the youth football, and we rent the fields out for adult soccer. We are going to turn those fields back over to the county. We had those fields when we started our youth football program some fifteen years ago. And the county will continue to run the youth football program. There's probably more county residents in it than Royal Palm, not a whole lot more. I think it's pretty close to fifty-fifty. And they'll take over the leasing of the fields for the adult soccer. So none of the programming will change, the maintenance responsibility and the operation of the park will just change to the county.
Everybody's good to go with that?
We are, and we'll send the notice out before July first, and we'll make it effective January first.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
This report, and in full disclosure, I am one of the panelists on that affordable housing symposium thing. So whether that's good, or bad, or indifferent, I just want a full disclosure on that. This is actually, I guess, the second module. There was a first piece that was back in October, and I was fortunate enough to participate in that one as well. Number one, and then just to let the council know, something I'm very excited about. The first week of October, I will be traveling to Williamsburg, Virginia. I am joining the William &amp; Mary Law School faculty as an adjunct law professor, and I'll be teaching a one-credit course at the law school that week. And kind of dipping my toe in the law professor pool, see how it goes. One-credit pass/fail course on all things, believe it or not, public participation and ethics in local government, First Amendment issues and that sort of thing. How to avoid jail time, not get forcibly escorted out of a council meeting.
Is that going to be on YouTube by any chance?
Yeah, so we'll see how that goes, very excited about that. And that is my report for tonight.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, we got a lot of things going on. All right, that concludes our reports this evening. At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, that would be the time to do that. Seeing no petitions, so I'm closing the floor to petitions then for the rest of the evening. Okay, and now, I don't have any comment cards, statements from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. Diane, any advance requests? No? Raise, anyone have their hand raised?
No mayor.
Okay, I do not have any comment cards, as I said, on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. So I'm closing the floor to non-agenda and consent agenda items, and ask Diane to give us the consent agenda. Mic on?
No, is it on? We can't hear you too well.
Closer.
Approval of the minutes, oh, there it goes. Approval of the minutes of the council organization meeting and council regular meeting of March twenty-first, 2024. Two, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund One Zero Five in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars from data center upgrade IS Two Three Zero Three and corporate picnic pavilion PR Two Three Zero Eight to village meeting hall reno EN Two Two Zero Two. Three, adoption of resolution twenty-four oh eight, a resolution in the village council, the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, authorizing the mayor to sign that certain statewide mutual aid agreement, 2023, with the state of Florida Division of Emergency Management and other local government entities, which agreement provides for state and local disaster assistance in the event of a disaster or threatened disaster. Providing for the village manager to act as the primary authorized representative contact in connection with the agreement and to provide information to the appropriate parties as requested, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Four, approval of the bid award in the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive responsible bidder, professional video repairer for Cypress Hall audio and video implementation EN Two Two Zero Two Meeting Hall Reno. Five, approval of a special event permit for Palm Beach Sheriff's Office to hold a food giveaway at Commons Park. The dates and times for the food giveaway will be as needed. Six, approval of a special event permit for the Average Joe Truck Club to hold a truck show event at One 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 Five Zero Okeechobee Boulevard on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, 2024, from seven thirty PM to ten PM. Seven, approval of a special event permit for the village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a Cultural Diversity Day at Veterans Park on Saturday, May eleventh, 2024, from eight AM to nine PM. Eight, approval of a special event permit for Community Animal Hospital to hold a thirty-five-year anniversary celebration at the Community Animal Hospital of Royal Palm Beach on Wednesday, May twenty-second, 2024, from four PM to six PM. Nine, approval of a special event permit for the village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a Memorial Day service at Veterans Park on Monday, May twenty-seventh, 2024, from eight AM to eleven AM. Ten, adoption of resolution number twenty-four oh seven, and approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with, between the state of Florida, Department of Transportation, and the village of Royal Palm Beach for a grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the La Mancha subdivision underdrain project PW Two Two Zero Four.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members on council?
I'd like to pull consent agenda item number five, please.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? All right, if no other further questions or comments, I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items number one through four and six through ten.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? Diane, let the record show, the consent agenda was approved one through four and six through ten. And you're on.
Good evening, Captain Nyax, how are you?
Evening, Councilwoman, how are you tonight?
Very well, thanks. Could you please tell us a little bit about the food giveaway that you're doing? And why is it as needed? Where is it going to be? How do people know about it?
Sheriff's Office formed a partnership with Restoration Bridge to provide food handouts to the community. It's done as an, excuse me, on an as-needed basis, based on availability of supplies. We've done it in Wellington, we've done them out in South Bay, we've done them throughout the county. Generally, it takes about two to three hours. It involves about two hundred to three hundred vehicles, from what I'm told, come through. We haven't done one of these here in the village yet, so I'm not sure what the enormity is. I'm told it won't be anywhere near the food drives that we had in Commons Park during the COVID era, where it went on for hours, and we had literally hundreds and hundreds of cars. Involvement from village staff should be minimal, if at all, maybe just initially the first time was set up in cones and maybe a traffic pattern. Short of that, everything will be handled with the sheriff's office through other agencies, I mean, other agencies, other divisions outside of District Nine. I'll be there, some of my staff will be there to try and help. And we plan on doing it hopefully quarterly, but once again, based on the availability of supplies.
Thank you, and the staff here is amazing, because they've had the year and a half of experience with... that, so they do work very well. And then, how does the public know about it? I mean, it's going to be over at Commons Park.
Yes, ma'am. It'll be advertised through social media, both on the Sheriff's Office and on the Restoration Bridge side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, questions? Any questions? Hold it.
Well, a question would be, I don't know, well, I guess it's a question for you, and then for Diane, is that something we could advertise on our boards? On our electronic boards?
We can do that.
Yeah, okay, because that'd be, I think, a good way to put it out.
Generally, I find out maybe 48 to 72 hours before, so it gets kind of put together very quickly.
We'll put it out.
And like I said, based on the availability, so we'll make it happen.
Yeah, it'd be good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other further questions? Look for a motion?
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number Five.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Diane, let the record show that Consent Agenda Item Number Five was approved 5-0. With that, we'll move into our regular agenda, our regular agenda item, all one, for public hearing to consider application number 23-179, an application by Gunster on behalf of EDX Royal Properties LLC, and Resolution Number 23-54 confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a master plan modification in order to convert the reference use for Pod 7 on the master plan from a public charter school to a public and private academic institution for a property located on the south side of Southern Boulevard approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi-judicial process. People need to be sworn in. My question is, do you also swear in for Agenda Item Number Two? Do you want to do it separately?
I'm going to do them. My preference would be to handle them separately, Mayor.
That's fine.
All right. You know, normally Ms. Barnard handles our land use-related matters, but I have so many attorney friends of mine in the audience tonight that I...
Why are you using the word "friends"?
Mr. Seymour, Mr. Fermero, we've all known each other for many years, so I'm going to do it tonight. So first of all, ladies and gentlemen, Agenda Item Number One is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so one of the things that that means is that if you're going to be offering testimony, evidence by way of testimony, it needs to be sworn and under oath. So I need to swear everybody in who's going to be speaking to the council about this item, including village staff. I have Mr. O'Brien. Anybody else who plans on testifying, please stand, raise your right hand.
It's like being at church.
Each of you swear, or make sure we get everybody, do each of you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, quick question, I see that both Mr. Fermero and Mr. Seymour took the oath. Are you here in the capacity as legal counsel, or are you going to be in the capacity as a witness offering testimony?
For Mr. O'Brien, Seymour, Gunster, the applicant, the applicant at Basis School. So basically, I'm going to be doing the presentation because it's really a legal question. So I am counsel for him, but I'm going to be doing the presentation, so I wanted to make sure that I'm sworn in.
All right, thank you. Back to council, one of the other things that is required in a quasi-judicial proceeding, since the decision that you make tonight is required by law to be based on the testimony and the evidence presented at tonight's hearing, requires you to disclose any ex parte activities or discussions you may have had, and by doing so, it removes the legal presumption that you've been prejudiced by those things. So any conversations that any of you may have had with applicants, with staff, with neighbors, if you've done a site visit, if you've consulted with an expert about any particular feature of the application, anything along those lines, while it's okay that that has happened, it needs to be disclosed and placed on the record at this time. So any disclosures that need to be made, please do so at this time.
Applicant and staff.
Okay.
Same for me. I believe it was the applicant, I don't know, it was someone from a school, a private school that I spoke with, so it's the applicant? Okay, so I didn't know, I didn't know if it was applicant or, and staff as well.
Thank you.
Same here.
Applicant and staff.
Applicant and developer.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And then with those preliminary matters, if the council...
It's an applicant, I meant staff and developer. And then talk to the applicant.
Just one last thing, if your council will indulge me, once the evidence is placed in the record and you've heard from the applicant, you'll hear, as we always do in these matters, from village staff, presumably there will be a motion to do something at the conclusion of, at the end of the presentations. This is a special exception, and you will be reminded of the special exception criteria in Bradford O'Brien's presentation, but my ask of the council is, and my explanation and my ask is that if there is a motion to approve the application, a motion to approve means you believe that the applicant has met its burden, and there is sufficient evidence in the record to establish all the criteria that are required to be established. On the other hand, if there's a motion to deny, I would ask the maker of the motion to specify which criteria you believe have not been met and have not, is or are not supported in the record by evidence, so that we have a clear record in that regard. And that will be, that will be helpful in formulating the order denying if that is the way it goes. So unless there are any questions about that, Mayor, I would turn it back over to you, and then we can proceed with the agenda item.
Before we move on, just, I did speak to the developer also, just to be complete.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Bradford, you're on.
Thank you, sir. The applicant is requesting master plan modification approval to modify the Village Royale Master Plan in order to convert the reference use for Pod 7 on the master plan from a public charter school to a public, public and/or private academic institution. The property is located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately .27 miles west of State Road 7. Village Code Section 2632-F5-B8. Intended use of all buildings and structures required that the intended uses for each building be labeled on the site plan. In this case, the two buildings totaling 77,674 square feet were originally approved with the intended use of a public charter school. Here is an illustration of Pod 7 on the master plan. As you can see there, it says charter school. I'm going to quickly run through the special exception criteria that was used to evaluate the special exception for the planned commercial slash planned development district, which includes the entire master plan. And this criteria is also used for the special exception approval for the public-private academic institution for Pod 7. The proposed special exception is consistent with the policies and standards of the village's comprehensive plan. The proposed special exception complies with all applicable development regulations of the Village Code. The proposed special exception does not have adverse environmental impacts, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The proposed special exception does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions, or the proposed special exception does not have an adverse impact on public facilities, including but not limited to impacts on police and fire protection, drainage systems, refuse disposal, water, sewers, and schools, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. Or the design of the proposed special exception does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties or is detrimental to their use and peaceful enjoyment, and will cause objectional noise, vibrations, and/or fumes. The proposed special exception is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood in which it is to be located. The proposed special exception does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions, or the proposed special exception is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property in accordance with the applicable Village Code development regulations, which cannot be prevented by, again, the imposition of conditions. The proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the air quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. April 4th, 2024, the village received a letter dated February 12th, 2024, in opposition to changing the master plan signed by the owners of Pod 2, Pod 3, Pod 4, and Pod 6. In part, this letter states, quote, "It was planned, Tuttle Royale was planned and designated from the beginning to be a truly new innovative center where residents of the village could live, work, play, meet, and grow as a community. It was planned and designed as a walkable community where residents' kids could, as a walkable community where residents' kids could walk to school with 10-foot sidewalks and large open spaces such as parks for the residents to use. Tuttle Royale was never designed and planned with a high-end private school where the affluent residents from Wellington and downtown West Palm Beach could bring their kids into each day and leave them with them. It was designed for the people of Royal Palm Beach. One of the main attractions of the Tuttle Royale Master Plan was the centrally-located charter school where the residents could walk to school and walk home. By making this change, all the attendees to the school will be driven there and driven home. Plus, this will require a resident school-aged student to leave the area to attend school. This change drives, drives a stake into the heart of the live-work-play community for the parents who want to walk their kids to school, who want to live next to the school, and who want to stay in the area so their kids can attend the same school over multiple years," end quote. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on March 26, 2024, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Having received no public comment at the public hearing and no correspondence whatsoever, either in support or in opposition to the request prior to the public meeting, village staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I really hate to interrupt, I just, I want to make sure I heard correctly from Bradford. Can you just repeat the date that the village received that letter? The letter is dated February 12th, but that's not when we got it.
Correct. Yes, it's, we received it on April 4th, 2024.
And that was after the P&amp;Z meeting, is that...
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, member of the council, Professor Davis. My name is Brian Seymour, on behalf of, forever, that is what's going to happen now. So I'm here on behalf of Basis Independent Schools. We have a number of folks with us, but because this really is a very simple thing, this is to actually identify the use that is in your code, which is the only use that your code provides relative to schools at all. And so I'll be brief on this. We do have representatives of Basis with us, Sean Powell, who's vice president of real estate, and Lynette Hodges, who's head of school for Basis Independent Manhattan, if you happen to have any school operational questions or things of that nature. Basis really started as a opportunity to provide the highest quality of education. In 1998, this curriculum was developed, and as a result of the work of Basis, and over the course of time, Basis has consistently been named as a top academic institution throughout the country, particularly over the last decade. That includes a number of high-quality results, 96% AP exam passage compared to a 60% global average, 4.32 out of 5 average AP exam rate against a U.S. average of 2.92, 98% earning distinctions as AP scholars, 1482 out of 1,600 on an average SAT, 33 of 36 average ACT score, which I'll brag a bit, that was my kids', 90% of the graduates accepted in the top 50 schools just in 2023. So Basis is an opportunity to really bring something special to the Village of Royal Palm Beach, and it's consistent with Tuttle Royale as it's been presented publicly. Tuttle Royale's master plan with 165 acres located south of Southern Boulevard, west of State Road 7. It is, as you know, a mixture of a little bit of single-family, some multifamily, and non-residential, including that approved 1,500-square-foot, or 1,500-student school, which was identified as in a parenthetical charter in the resolution and is identified as charter on the master plan and the site plan. The problem with that is the charter doesn't exist in your code, which is why we had to come back here today. So Florida tomorrow described Tuttle Royale as including, and I'm quoting, "high-end retail." That includes local and regional draws, Laro, I Pick, Dine-In Movie Theater, Lululemon, Anthropology, Sephora, and many others. As Mr. Tuttle himself said in this article, as he was quoted, "That is driven by an average household income in excess of $100,000 within a 15-minute drive radius." This is exactly the kind of place that Basis fits actually quite well. It serves a community, a complete community, just as Tuttle Royale does. And yes, it will bring people from not in the Village of Royal Palm Beach, just as Tuttle Royale does. But it also does provide, and as I'll mention in a second, a whole lot of benefits to the village. So here's why we're actually here. On December 19th, 2019, y'all approved a resolution granting site plan, architectural aesthetic review, and a special exception for the site for the construction of this 1,500-student school. The concept was at the time to operate it as a charter school, which is, again, not a use that's specified in the code and since then has not occurred nor will it occur. There is no charter school that's looking at this site, there's no charter school that's come to this site, the school board has not wanted to put a school on this site, and so what we have is vacant land that can't be used for a charter school, and we have an opportunity to bring something that actually meets the code-specific requirements. So because it's an approved school site, we can go build. Right now, we can go build a school.
No, you can't, but go ahead, continue.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
No, finish your presentation, please. No, because you're making statements, I don't know where you're getting that information.
I'll be happy to explain.
That there's going to be no charter school there, but...
I will be happy to explain.
No, continue with your presentation. Continue with your presentation.
I'm trying, Mr. Mayor, I really am. So right now, that school is vested, a school can go be built. It is not built solely because the word charter, which doesn't, again, appear in your code, is in the resolution. If there was a charter school, they could go build it. What Basis is proposing is to build exactly what is approved, building the site as approved with very minor changes assigned and some other things that have no material effect, exactly as it was and is approved for a school. So what we're asking is quite simply to use the code and the language that is directly in your code for this particular use, which is to just say, public or private academic institution. That is all. The impacts don't change. There's no requested increase in square footage, there's no requested increase in students, the architectural style remains, the circulation pattern and site configuration remains, the landscape buffer remains. Everything that was approved for the site design is the same for what you have. The traffic is also the same as the approved school. We went back and looked, and we spoke with the traffic engineer who did this, and there are two different ways that traffic is analyzed when it comes to schools. One is a public school and one is a private school. This traffic analysis was based on a private school traffic. It was not based on public school traffic. So the analysis that you have that's built in to Tuttle Royale for this site is traffic associated with the private school, that is not changing either. That is consistent traffic with what we're asking for today. And this is all that it means. These words change to these words. That is the only request that we have before you today. With that, you actually have the use of the site that is otherwise unusable. We'll bring approximately 80 teachers and 30 administrators, many of whom could live right there at Tuttle Royale, many of whom could live right here in the Village of Royal Palm Beach, and they stay here. Community stability is a critical part of Basis. They keep their teachers, because their teachers have ownership of their classroom, they provide incentive pay for their teachers, and they provide their teachers with leadership programs and opportunities for advancement. and they provide their teachers with leadership programs and opportunities for advancement. It is also ready to go. Basis is self-funded. They don't need anyone to come to them. They're ready to move, and it's a shovel-ready site with this one minor change. They also, unlike a charter school, will pay property taxes to the village because they are not a nonprofit school. And again, it will help support the residential retail at Tuttle Royale, providing people to the project, both coming and going. People who will utilize the retail, the people who can live there, who can then walk, work at that school and be part of the school. This does meet, as Bradford said, all of the application requirements. It meets the requirements for development orders. It does meet the special exception requirements, particularly since all of those requirements are met on the existing design, which are not being proposed to be changed. And again, the traffic particularly was the one thing where there's uniqueness between public and private schools. And the private school traffic was already analyzed and found to be appropriate and is baked into this. With that, we're asking for the very simple change so that we can utilize the site and bring Basis Independent to Royal Palm Beach. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, before we go to any questions from members of the council, I'd like to see, you have public comment cards here, but Diane, do we have any advance comments? Do you have a card? You can bring it up. Sorry. Ray, do you have any hand raised?
Changing screens.
Okay.
Well, that would be another way to do that. No mayor, no hands raised.
All right, I do have public comment cards that were submitted. Now, these cards... Okay, this is round number 2. Should we have, if they want to speak on 1 and 2, can they do it now? One at a time? Because then we've got to recall everybody up again.
And we've only really addressed item 1. I know that they are inextricably intertwined. If you want to take all the comments...
Well, because on each of them, they all have 1 and 2, 1 and 2.
Oh, then go ahead and take them, yes.
All right. We'll start out with Ralph Arza. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Ralph Arza. I'm a former state representative here in the state of Florida. I served three consecutive terms. I was a chairman of education, and I was an incredible advocate for school choice. And I grew up in the city of Miami. I was a teacher, football coach, at Miami Senior High School. And I saw parents lie about where they live in order to send their children to a better school. And I felt there was something wrong with that. So I was an advocate for school choice. Does it mean I don't support public schools? We have some incredible public schools that do an incredible job. So when it comes to school choice and you look at the state of Florida today, you have a legislature and a governor that has empowered parents to make the best possible choice for their children. It polls at around 80% of who is the best qualified person to determine the best school for their child, and that is a parent. And we support that. And we appreciate your support of school choice. You did it before when you voted to allow this to be a possible charter school. And I would just ask that you support this on the basis that this empowers parents through the scholarships that are available today to all parents. They can take that voucher and they can send their child to a school of their choice. In the same way, when you walk into Publix and there's more choices nowadays for R&amp;Shoes than I ever imagined in my lifetime as I was growing up. The same thing is happening in the marketplace, that educational marketplace. So I would humbly ask you to support this opportunity of giving parents an opportunity to send their child to the school of their choice. When parents drive by a school, a lot of them don't know whether it's a private, a charter, a traditional, a magnet, you know? They just know it's a school. And they might think that's the right school for their children. And that's what I'm advocating here for. I represent the Florida Charter School Alliance, which is about 300 charter schools in the state of Florida. We're very involved here in Palm Beach. We met with Superintendent Burke, and he had no interest in trying to build a school out here. I represent most of, all of the charter, the big charter operators and some small and pops that are here in the Glades community. There isn't the interest in the marketplace for that. So with that information, I would just ask you to humbly support the item. I think it's the right thing. I serve in the Doral Zoning Board, the modern city of Doral. And you know, the attorney said to me, "How you personally feel about something is not reason enough to vote against something. You have to have a justifiable reason to say no." I think today in the state of Florida, the governor, the law, is a school is a school. And parents are empowered to make the best possible choice for their children. So I would ask you to support this.
Thank you for your comments. John Fumero? Fumero? Did I say that right?
Fumero, yes.
Okay, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. My name is John Fumero. I'm with Nathan Jager-Gerson and Fumero. I'm here on behalf of the landowner of Pod F, EDX Royale Properties LLC. And I would just echo a few things that former Representative Arza said. Really, what's important here is what is justified on the record before you, as Professor Davis will tell you. It's all about what's in the record here. And I would point out to your professional staff, in its report, it's found, quote, "No change in the operations or physical development of the property and the impacts of the development as a public and private academic institution are no greater than that of a charter school." So the staff has thoroughly analyzed this and is supportive of the effect of both of the requests before you, both of the agenda items. Council has previously approved the use of this property as an academic institution. In terms of opposition, there was something received late in the game from a Jason property owner. But that's the same individual that's been quoted in the media saying, "A park with lots of activities surrounded by, quote, 'high-end retailers and great-quality restaurants.'" The point being is, "high-end is in the eye of the beholder." What we're talking about here is school choice. And frankly, when you do look at the code, it's got to be pointed out here that your general commercial zoning, which is for Pod F, allows for approval of certain special exceptions. The only area that addresses any kind of school within the code under the CG zoning is "public and private academic institution." The words "academic institution" or "institution" are not defined in the code, and there's absolutely no mention of charter. And what we want to avoid, with all due respect, is as a matter of policy, trying to distinguish between a Starbucks and a Dunkin' Donuts. That's not what should be done this evening. What should be done is based on the code and based on the zoning designation. That's what justifiable reason is all about. And again, as I mentioned, there is a resolution that doesn't make any reference to charter school or public and private academic institution. Again, the charter school notion was a little designation on a map. Whether purposeful or not, it is just that a designation on a map. And as a matter of fact and law, I think we're bound by what's in the code. And the purpose tonight is merely to clarify an interpretation that frankly, I think was misconstrued. And we're here to clarify that interpretation. So I would urge you to support the staff recommendation and support the recommendation on this item. As a matter of law and as a matter of public policy, it is the appropriate thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, you had a card here as well for agenda item number 2. Have you covered both? Okay. Okay. Lauren Hollander? Come on down.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Lauren Hollander, and I'm the Chair of the Florida Charter School Alliance. One of the things that's become very challenging in the charter school environment is the economics of building a greenfield charter school in this current environment that we're in with construction costs and land costs. And so one of the difficult things to watch and see is this community has added something to your area that's very unique. It would be a shame to not have education at its center because right now, the reduction of greenfield charter schools has dropped rather dramatically in new developments because of the economics. There is a limited resource of what you're going to be funded for operations, and therefore, it becomes rather challenging to build in today's environment. What does stand in front of you is an opportunity for an additional school of choice for the public. You know, it's as if Royal Palm was in front of itself with calling it "the public and private educational institution" because now the public does have access to those private institutions in a way that I would encourage you to really vote for and support because you may very well be having those tryouts for theater in the round right here in Royal Palm Beach. It seems to me the differentiated program that this school offers to your community may enhance your community at large. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments, ma'am. You two were down listed for 1 and 2, so I'm going to take that. Your comments apply as well to 2. Okay. Mark Rodberg? Come on down, sir.
Hello, Mark Rodberg. Address? What else do I have to add to that? No, Mark Rodberg. I've been the contract buyer or the owner of this property for eight years. So Tuttle Royale, my explanation be a overnight success. Just a long, long night. Five years ago, charter schools were expanding. I had two interested parties. I brought one before you. And Mr. Rera even asked that the Somerset add art to the steam. Year lapsed. That very school purchased the charter school in Wellington, 1.2 miles away, and is thriving over there now and does not need another location. The second viable candidate was Western that made no less than five attempts to negotiate with me to build a school for them to move out of their old location. When Renaissance decided to leave, I originally bought Albertson's, remodeled it and put Renaissance there as my tenant, and then ultimately, I sold it to them. I negotiated to buy the Albertsons back and worked with Western to put Western in there. And that's been a success. They don't need another location. When we started this, I was building three to four, as many as five charter schools a year in South Florida. I have not built a traditional... I've built over 40 schools in Florida. I've not built another traditional K-12 charter school in the last four years. They're not expanding, folks. And in order for someone, they have to be a quality operator, is all you would want. They also have to be a credit tenant to invest the millions of dollars it takes. So both applicants I had, the time passed us by. So at the time, it was our vision, it's what we all talked about, live, play, work, study, the park right down the street. I discussed that. We had this vision. It's changed, ladies and gentlemen. The delivery of education is the vouchers, the virtual, the homeschool, the Publix, the public schools adding magnets. So it's not what it was. So to me, this would be like, it could have been a good idea at one point to build a blockbuster with a photo mart and maybe a borders, books, and records. Times have changed. Charter schools are not expanding on greenfield sites in South Florida. Thank you.
Your comments. Question, hold it, hold it.
I'm sorry.
We have a question for you.
Since you know the people who were here before that were going to do the charter school, did the one that they moved to in Wellington, did it become a K-12 charter school?
No, I believe they're KA, but they added to art, they steam.
All right.
And they used the charter contract that was meant to be here over there.
Right. But this was unique because it was going to be a K-12. I'm sure you remember that. That was a big thing with me.
As a KA, they can expand now every year and add 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th.
Right. But as it is now, it's not K-12 like it was supposed to be or was envisioned here, right?
That was our vision.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
However, this basis is K-12.
Thank you. Okay. Brian Tuttle?
Commissioners, applicant. This is just genuinely a difference of opinion, and it's up to the commission to decide which way to go. This is a great school. This is a great asset for Palm Beach County. But this is not what we worked eight to 10 years to do. This is not what the design of the community was. I'd like to address some of their comments, and then I'll close. To think that we put the word "charter" on the master plan was an oversight. We sat in meetings for years debating what we were building here. And every word was reviewed and acknowledged and agreed upon between the city and me. Number 2. Yes, construction costs are up. Interest rates are up. From a guy who's got hundreds of millions of dollars in debt, I can tell you it hurts. But times will change. And we don't throw away the idea because of a one-year or two-year problem with interest rates and construction cost. We see the plan through. Number 2. Everyone knows that schools follow residential. They're not in front of it. They follow it. We have 400 apartments built. We have 700 under construction. We have another 100 single-family homes starting in three to four months. And hopefully, in another three to four months, we have another 400 apartments going. Once those are built in two years, then you will have the critical mass to have the charter school that will allow it to be a public charter school as it was designed for the last eight years. The next thing. There are two special exceptions that they cannot meet. The first one is deteriorating adjacent property values. By changing to a high-end private school from a local charter school, it negatively impacts the value of the three-apartment sites and the single-family residential homes. Because instead of those residents being able to walk their kids to school, that means residents are more likely to, when their rents come up or their things change, to move. So your turnover rate is higher, so your property values are lower. There is no argument about that. The second thing there's no argument about, it negatively impacts traffic. Now, they can argue, and they're good. And again, it's just a genuine disagreement that the traffic study approved was for a school from all over the county. That's their argument, the traffic. And I did the traffic study, and I would agree with that. However, you can't argue that by putting a private school there, the traffic is worse than having a local school. And that negatively impacts traffic. Thank you for your time. And again, it's the right school, it's the right people, it's the wrong location. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your call. Do you have a question?
Mr. Tuttle? Quick question, a couple quick questions. What is the mean of your rent now for the units that are already occupied? The monthly rent?
One bedrooms, we're renting right now for 2,200 to 2,300 to 2,400. Two bedrooms start at 27 to 31. Three bedrooms start 32 to 37. And the four bedrooms, three bedrooms and four bedrooms go 41 to 4,400.
Okay. And then your pre-constructed sale price for single-family homes?
They will start at $699 and go to $899.
Okay. And then how long until they're completed? Okay. And then how long until they're completed?
I intend to submit the land development permit application on Monday. They intend to close June 1st. You'll have residents living there in nine months to a year.
Okay. And then Bradford, quick question. Hypothetically speaking, if this were approved and the process goes through, how long does it take before the school's ready for their first day?
That would be a, construction, and things of that nature.
Starting in August.
It's, it's a, it's a question that's better answered by the developers and.
So Mark, if you want to tell me, is it August of 2025, August 26, August 27? When do you anticipate opening, theoretically? I'm not gonna hold you to it, I'm just asking.
No, no, I wanted to get it from the horse's mouth. That's why I asked, and we come to microphones to answer questions. So if we got approved tonight, the goal is to open in the, for the 25 school year.
So in, in a little over a year?
Uh huh.
Okay, so then the development would be occupied by then, so we can do it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had my timeframe and numbers in order. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Tuttle, will you repeat your statement about the traffic impact?
Yeah, the, the, the traffic studies were done for Palm Beach County Code, which Village Royal Palm Beach follows the Palm Beach County Code, traffic standards and traffic impact analysis, and there's capture analysis in those. And I truthfully didn't study it, but I know there was some capture analysis in the traffic study for a school. I don't know, you know, they said they talked to the traffic engineer, and, and she did or didn't use it. But I think the question is, this change, does it impact traffic? See, the, the special exception says, does this impact traffic? And the question is, yes. Because the residents will not be, the residents will be leaving to go to other schools, and other outside residents will be coming in, which negatively impacts traffic. And it negatively impacts the resale value of my apartments or anyone else's apartments, because your turnover rate is higher, because people have to move if their kids are going to different schools versus they can live there. And that was the whole idea, was that they could live there for years and their kids could attend the same school.
So is it, is it true then, that the traffic study that was done really didn't show any difference between a private school or a public school?
I can't comment to that. I, you'd have to take testimony from somebody who's studied it to that level.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question from Mr. Tuttle? Okay. Okay. I don't have any further comment cards. Any one still would like to comment who didn't give me a card? I'll give you that opportunity right now. Agenda item R1 and R2. Seeing none. So I'm closing public comments then on these two agenda, on this, well, both of these agenda items tonight. Now, for, we're gonna have, I'm gonna let the council ask any questions. I just wanna put a couple of points on the table and on the record. As mentioned, we've been working at this project for a long time, many years, okay? And it was a project that required us to, to actually come together as a, as an elected body, to figure out, how do we take what was a vision, reality? Over these years, I've been pummeled with many questions from our citizens. And what the number one issue that they all had was traffic congestion, all right? So that clearly indicated to this council that whatever the final master plan was, it had to be one that we, we felt that we did something to address the traffic congestion problem. And quite simply, you know, I really don't appreciate the fact that you're coming here trying to put, trying to find a loophole in, in our ordinances or something like that. Because this is not about, this is not what this is about tonight. And what this is also not about tonight, I think your, your school is probably gonna be an outstanding school. I think you do a great job, but this is not gonna be the site for you to do that great job, okay? You could find another site perhaps in Royal Palm, or go to Wellington. Wellington scattered a lot of potential sites. So that's not the issue about the quality of your education and how long you've been doing it. The issue tonight is, this council, all right, deliberated for many years in working with the developer, for, for them to finally come to us with a site plan and a master plan that we could live with and approve. One of the key components in our approval of this plan was, we're gonna have some 1,200 students living in this development once it's built out. And we wanted to be able to have those 1,200 students and their families not have to leave that development for them to go to school. Ergo, it was very clear, all right, that what we needed was a charter school that was a K through 12 charter school. And what I found interesting is, I don't know, a year or two passed, and they were back here asking us again, are we really sure we want this charter school? Before this council, for the second time, okay, we had to reiterate, you must have that charter school. That was what we'd agreed to, that was on the site plan, all right? If you want the site plan, disqualify. If you don't have the charter school, K through 12, so we can contain the traffic within that development, okay? We voted on this twice. And twice that vote, this legislative decision that we have the authority to make, was a promise to our citizens, okay? That we heard their concerns about this development being done there, and this was one of the key elements in that project, that we were able to deliver and say, we promised our citizens, we will do something about addressing these issues. And that's what we did. We made a commitment to our citizens. And I'm just saying that because all, I'm, council members will have their own opportunity to speak. But I just wanna put this in the context for you, all right, that what this whole issue is really about, all right? It's about our legislative authority to decide how we want our community to evolve, how we wanted this project to evolve, why we approved the site plan, okay? And why we absolutely required that we have this charter school, K through 12. Now, notwithstanding the stories I'm hearing tonight about the economy and all these other issues, I really don't, that's really immaterial, okay? It's immaterial. We made a commitment to our citizens, and I'm telling you, I plan on, we're gonna, we're gonna stand up to that commitment to our citizens. Having said that, floor is open to any other questions or comments from members on council.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would like to respond to a couple of the comments that Mr. Tuttle made, specifically to Mr. Mayor's comment as well about the traffic question, which you also just raised, if I may.
I don't know what, what, at what point. You're not gonna change the, the reality of what we made a decision on. And you're not, and let me tell you something else. Just 'cause something, you, you can't stand here and try to force us to do something because you're saying, what you said is a legal requirement. That is a bunch of baloney, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to force you to do anything.
Yes, you are. This whole presentation, just you're trying to force us to change something we voted on twice already, and reiterated that we wanted the charter school there. That's our decision to make. It's not your decision.
So if it was my decision, Mr. Mayor, we would have made it, obviously. I'm asking.
Okay. I want my council to have a chance to speak, please. Who wants to speak?
Go ahead, well, chief, let him address.
No, I don't wanna hear it. Go.
Actually, so there, there are a couple things.
This is not a debate.
It, it, no, I, I, I believe we can all make our decision and.
No, I'm saying, but I, this, I'm not gonna debate with you about what he said and they said. No. The facts are very clear. What we decided as an elected body, what we want for our village, and the promise we made to our citizens.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I was just, I was just asking to rebut testimony that was made.
All right. And as far as that corner, as the busiest intersection in the largest county east of the Mississippi, the traffic is already there. So the debate I think that we had was with all the homes going in there and the people coming in and out of there. I personally would like the light, and this is, I know, a county road, to coincide with the rest of them, just because that one seems to stop me every morning.
The Erica light?
The Erica light. God, rest her soul. I, I think of her every morning on, when I pass by. So a couple things. My very first campaign I ran, I said, I am in favor of varieties of schools, because every child learns differently. I'm dyslexic. I learn differently than Councilman Valentes does, than anybody else up here. And I think the more options we have for our children, where they can grow and excel, the better off they are. My concern with this more of the fact is the affordability. And this is a concern I've expressed from the very beginning when we talked about it. The, I said I couldn't send my child there, based on my salary and how much tuition is. I think back on when we first talked about this, and we, we discussed it was a K through 12, and Councilman, Valentes, I'm sorry, said, he has three children. How wonderful it would be to have all three children in one school instead of three different schools, because we don't have that. So going back and looking all through this, it's not, listening to staff and their recommendation, and it's not exceeding what we've already put in place. Listening to what the, or the mean price of rent is, so for a two-bedroom in Tuttel Royale, is twice what my mortgage is with insurance and homeowner's insurance. So then I'm thinking, well, maybe I can't afford it, but it doesn't mean others can't afford it. It will be opened, the homes will be built, the complexes will be inhabitant by the time you're opening up, just based on the timeframe to build the, the schools, the homes, I'm sorry. I look then also, this is the third school that's come to us. So Mark, you've brought us two schools before. However long this night is and why it took so long, I'm not sure. But do you let a third school go by, and then we're back at square one, and now we're waiting for a fourth school to come in? And will a school come back to us at that point? I do like that it's K through 12. I'm not a fan of the tuition rate. I know we talked about this, is that if there's a portion of spots that can be reserved for Royal Palm Beach residents, if there's an option for scholarships, either full or partial, that are for Royal Palm Beach residents. These are concerns that I had, because when I look at the 38,000 residents in the village who want to send their children somewhere, is this an option for them, or is it for somebody else's child? I do understand the economic benefit of it, that you're bringing in other people from other areas, whether they're gonna be working there. I'm assuming, you know, you could say that the teacher's salary will be enough that they could afford to live in the complex. But that is my main concern, is the tuition level and the average home income in Royal Palm Beach.
So I, we did talk about that. I appreciate that, Councilwoman Samia. So the, and we talked about it internally as well. We do understand that issue. There's a number of things that go into the tuition. The homes at 700 to 900,000, those people probably could afford the tuition. So if we were looking at, and we could come up with 10 partial sc, half scholarships, we could do them in 20 quarters as well. If, if there were students in the village Royal Palm Beach who met the criteria, there's, there's academic criteria that go into the school, obviously. We could certainly provide that scholarship available on a need basis. And I would wanna be careful with that, because when I just heard the numbers that you asked of Mr. Tuttle, those folks would not be the need basis. And so if we're trying to serve the folks, we'd wanna make sure that we have the need analysis done. But we could provide those 10 half scholarships, and we would, we would agree to a condition of approval tonight, that we do that. Keith and, and Mitty and I would have to probably work out the exact language, because we haven't done that yet. But we could certainly come up with something like that tonight.
Thank you for the consideration.
You're next.
I don't know if we're just going down the line.
No, go ahead, yeah.
Well, I, I can tell you, when, when this came before me, I am someone who went to nothing but Florida public schools and universities. That's all I had the opportunity to go to, because I couldn't afford anything more. Still paying for student loans and that. My kids have gone to nothing but public schools and won in a university, because that's the means of his parents. That's why I really wasn't even sold on the school idea until it came to us as, okay, it's gonna be a K to 12, which definitely was a unique thing here in the village. But the real twist was, it's a K to 12 charter, which is a public school, which, I, I don't know that there's any in the county. I know there's definitely not any in the area. And that was what got me on board with it. Now, I guess, because of the way our code says, what is the term, public and private academic institution. And Keith, I heard someone say, there's not a specific definition of that in the code.
Village's code does not make a distinction between those types of school. We, we, we recognize the educational institution, the school, but we don't make a distinction between a private, or a regular public, or a charter public.
And I'm sorry, I didn't think of this beforehand. It would have been good to know beforehand, so I'm kinda putting you on the spot. Is there anything improper? Because what we did here, we did put this in the master plan, because this is what was envisioned. For example, if a, a specific place, like I know in, what Tampa, they have that IMG Academy, or the University of Florida tried to come to West Palm Beach, would we be able to put, would it be improper or wrong for us to put in one of these site plans, a university of X, public or private institution? So basically, what I'm saying is, is there anything wrong with designating the charter like we did? Because that was the plan for the master plan of the community.
Let me.
And I know it's, it's throwing something at you that I, I should have gotten or thought about beforehand.
A little more lengthy of a, an explanation that you'd like. So this kinda gets to the issue of, we have two agenda items. The second agenda item, which talks about the site plan, architectural and review modification of the site itself. And you, interestingly enough, I believe all five of you were on the council in 2019. There has been no turnover. So you should all, you were all the decision makers at that time. So hopefully, you will recall, it required a special exception to allow the school to exist in the commercial general zoning district. Whether it's a public school, or a charter school, or a private school, doesn't matter for that purpose. It's putting a school in a commercial general zone. So the special exception was granted, since our code makes no distinction between the public school, private school. That is why you, you may notice in agenda item two, there, it is not a request to modify the special exception, because it doesn't matter for that one. It, it's a school, whether it's a private school, or a charter school, or a traditional public school. It's still a school. That special exception is, does not get changed.
For the site plan.
For the site plan, for number two. So now we come back to number one. And there's been a lot of discussion, and there's been testimony, and there's been council comment. You know, here we're talking about the master plan. So now you're, and, and let me preface this comment by saying, on, on the other hand, while our code does not carve, you know, say, define charter school and define public school, and it also recognizes and acknowledges that there are public schools and private schools. The def, the, the definition of school, it doesn't just say school. It says public and private. So it acknowledges, on the other hand, that there are different, that there are different types of schools. In your master planning and in approving the master, the master plan with the planned, the commercial development with the residential component, is also a special exception. And in 2019, when you approved that, that, you know, you looked at the special exception criteria, which were put in the record by Bradford, and it, and included all of those things, the, you know, the things that were spoken about in terms of property value, the things that were spoken about in terms of traffic. There's other criteria that talk about infrastructure, including schools, that talk about the character of the neighborhood. And you, as the decision makers, you, you need to determine how a school that was intended to serve the residents of the neighborhood, how that impacts the character of the project versus a school that might serve folks who aren't in the neighborhood. And what does that do? I mean, again, you're the decision makers. You've got, you've had presentations from a number of people tonight about those issues. So if you, yes, our code, again, it's all one, schools, but it acknowledges that there are private schools and public schools. And if you find that, based on the evidence that's in the record tonight, that changing it from a private school to a public school in the master plan alters the character of the neighborhood and impacts the pedestrian and vehicular traffic, then you should move accordingly. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. The way I decipher. The way I decipher the question is, yes, we can do, and say, a charter school, like we did. It wasn't, even though it's not delineated in that, because that was part of the master plan.
The master plan.
Because the master plan was for to have a charter school there. And then if it came back is, and specifically for me, it was a K to 12 charter school. Now, if they came back and said, oh, we just want to do a charter high school, they'd have to come back and try to get a change on that too, right? Or not the way we've done it?
I'm sorry, I'm...
If they changed, if it was a charter school still, and it was a K to 12 charter school in the master plan, and they came back and said, we just want a charter high school in the master plan, they'd still have to come through the same process and change it, right?
Your analysis would have to be the same. Does that...
Right, but we...
Does that change in the school have an impact on the special exception criteria that no longer make, that no longer meet the criteria for the special exception as it did when you approved the original master plan?
Right, I guess what I'm, I worded it improperly. They would still have to come back to change the master plan if that's what was going to go on. I guess that's my question. Just because it said charter school doesn't mean any type of charter school, whatever. It's the charter school in the master plan that was approved, right?
But I...
I know, I'm sorry.
This is difficult to answer, because...
I'm putting you on a bad spot, and I wish I would have thought of these things beforehand.
And Bradford may be able to help me here. I don't recall that the master plan approval, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't remember if it was that specific in terms of K through 12 versus charter school. I don't, I don't recall.
Okay, so... The site plan, excuse me, does have two buildings, one with the 1 through 8, and then the high school.
That's not this one.
So if they were to, just in this instance, if they were wanting to repurpose or have a different style use, the high school building that was labeled as such was going to then become 1, K through 8, all of them K through 8, then we would bring them back. And I think, I do also believe that the information that you have made your decision on also is translated into the resolutions that are approved, the site plan, and the special exception, where those, that language is outlined, and that would have to be changed.
But that would be for number two. That's not what's this one, correct, Keith?
Master plan, right?
No, he said site plan. The buildings on the site plan, one was designated for the lower, another one for the high. That's what I understand.
They both say master plan. I didn't know why it said that.
I need to look at the language in the resolutions. If the master plan resolution was that specific, then that would, they'd have to come back for a change. If it was not that specific, then perhaps they wouldn't, but it depends on how it was written.
In any event, they could possibly be in the same situation as we are tonight, looking at them to change the master plan.
Let me ask, let me answer how we would handle the site plan. The site plan was done with a, for the whole site, for a K through 12, with the two buildings. If they chose just to do a high school, we would look that, we would look at that as a phasing of the implementation of the K through 12, and we would ask for a phasing plan for the rest, to be consistent with the site plan.
No, I was saying, they just, no, there is no, they're just going high school. The K to whatever is abandoned, but they have to change it.
I was just responding how we would deal with it. We would deal with it saying, it's approved for all of them. You're only building this part, give us the phasing for the rest of the site plan. And that's the only way it would be consistent, if we got some kind of, it back saying, that's going to be in some future phase. They actually came in with wanting to do K through 12 in Phase 1, and then, and then build into the high school at a later phase, and that's, that was how it was approved, and that was perfectly fine. I just don't remember reading in the special exception if it said K through 12. I know it said "public charter school." I don't know if it said K through 12 in the special exception. I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Yes, thank you. So we were just talking about this symposium that's taking place downtown to focus on affordable housing. For me, the real pivotal issue is affordability. And I think we're kind of talking about that by asking things like, what's the, what's the rent at Total Royale right now? Talked about a voucher. Isn't a voucher worth $8,000? Did I have that number correct?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, $8,000, right. So is, can you give me an estimate for an annual tuition cost for Basis?
I'll double check, give me one second. Don't want to miss it up. So it's not set, but it'll probably be around in the 30 ranges.
30 range?
Yeah.
Okay, so some time ago, when I asked, it was 35. But anyway, my point would be just doing kind of a rough, very rough average of the cost of housing at Total Royale, being around $36,000. What we'd be saying is basically, the cost of your child's education would be the same as the cost of housing. It's a pretty big deal for most people.
That's if you have one child.
If you have one child, yes, exactly.
As I said, Mr. Mayor, that's why we offer with Ms. Samios, that, you know, we could provide some of those partial scholarships. If you had the, both of those together, you'd be at very, 23, I guess, if you use those numbers, in scholarship and the voucher in that circumstance. So yes, there would be a cost, but it would be far less. It would be less than even King's Academy, even in the first grade.
For me, one of the most important considerations of this whole concept of what's being developed over there right now is the walkability, accessibility. And there are barriers to that, and it's not something you can fix with a 10-foot wide sidewalk. If I can't afford to access something, and if it's Ruth Chris Steakhouse, okay, I'll go someplace else. Not really much of a big deal. If I can't afford the school in my neighborhood, it's a different thing to me. And that's, that's my concern, and that kind of goes after the, the character of that community that we created over these years of conversations. And, and some of these things that, that really I would, I would hate to see diminished, such as being able to access all, pretty much all of what you really need, right in that one area, would be something that'd be really, really difficult for me to accept.
I hear what you're saying, Ms. Vice Mayor. All I can tell you is that the analysis that was done, the traffic engineer and the traffic you all analyzed when you approved the, what is called charter school, did not incorporate all the walkability. So everything that was considered, all the traffic that was analyzed, was based on, as though it was a private school. That was actually the analysis that was done, that's in the traffic study that was part of the record, that's a traffic study that was done at the county. Again, as I said earlier, I called to confirm, and I spoke with, we spoke with the traffic engineer who did that. So I do hear what you're saying. All I can tell you is, from an evidentiary standpoint, from what happened at the time with the traffic, it was exactly the same as what we're proposing tonight, would be that analysis. So I hear you, but that's, that's the difficulty I have.
I heard what you said. The evidence of this traffic study doesn't really provide any kind of fundamental support for the notion that the traffic impacting that kind of... Of course, I wasn't talking about traffic, by the way. I was talking about compatibility. I was talking about the nature of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. That's what I was talking about. But, but let me, let me back up to that, though. So would you, would you say that we are bound, insofar as considering the traffic impact, to what I might consider a defective, incomplete, let's put it that way, incomplete, not defective, incomplete traffic study? That just because we didn't do something that was more specific and tied more closely to what many of us, I think, assume? Shame on us, but then to say, well, because you don't have any other evidence, we have no basis for being concerned about, officially concerned about traffic?
So there's a difference, and I'm not going to be your lawyer, but there is a difference between concern and evidence, right? And it's something we deal with all the, all the time, right? And I'm sure that was dealt with when we were talking about the totality of this as well, right? And so the best you can do is rely on the studies and rely on the information that's provided by the expert. Because I can't get to a, I feel like, or I think it might happen, because we don't know. So they use data based on a whole lot of other information, and they present it. That's what was done when this was approved. And all I'm saying is, we aren't changing that at all. So whatever was done, was done.
Okay. Can I make a comment about this traffic? The, the trip generation between public and private schools is not different. And it's not different the way we, if we were to evaluate it, and the county doesn't evaluate the trip generation difference. The difference between public and private schools is whether it has buses or not. The county uses private for charter schools analysis, because they typically don't have buses. So that's why the county will use the private school generations without buses. So that's, that's kind of, we don't expect buses to be going to charter schools. So they're, so they're more like private schools when it comes to the trip study. And he's absolutely right, the trip generation between the two is not any different. A student is a student is a student in the same amount get driven, and there is no differentiation. There also is no differentiation between whether you have a school that costs $30,000 a year or $10,000 a year. That's not anywhere in the study. So the main difference is whether there's buses or not. And the county uses the private for the purpose that most charter schools don't have buses, like the pri, like the public schools have.
Right.
Like, let me rephrase that, like the...
Traditional.
Traditional, public schools have. That's why, that's why it's like that, and that's why it got approved that way.
So nothing wrong with our study, except it's just contrary to what our guts telling us about what will work and whether there'll be a capture effect or not.
I think what he's telling you is, what he's telling you is, the study that was, the analysis that was used, wouldn't be any different, whether it was a private or charter school. And he's absolutely 100% correct. But that's not, I don't think that's what you're deciding here. I think in your mind, you're saying, now wait a minute, if it's a $30,000 private school versus a public charter school, my gut feeling is, a lot more of those people that live within those 1,600 units are going to be able to go there if it's a public free school.
Exactly. And, and that...
And that's, schools and impacts on schools, your local schools are one of the, one of the criteria you get to use in the special exception under infrastructure impact.
Okay.
But the study won't tell you that. The study, the traffic analysis that we did, won't tell you that.
Got it, got it. Okay, so insofar as the, the impact is concerned on the, on the basic nature, like I said, of a walkable community. I mean, we really don't have one of those. That's what we were going after, that's what we were trying to make happen. And that, to me, is character. And the difference between a private school at $30,000 a year and a public school, charter or otherwise, would change the character by virtue of the likelihood of the response of the people living in that neighborhood. And so that's what my concern is, and that is one of the elements, right, that we consider in special exceptions, that impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood? Did I have that right?
One bullet point on this slide, the one that you were looking to...
We don't have it on our screen.
Proposed special exception, it's compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, which are dislocated.
The character and living conditions of the ex, yes, that's, that's what I'm referring to. And, and so I, I see that, that affordability aspect, if you will, as, as having an impact on the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, given, given what I think is a realistic expectation, that there will be far less of the people in the neighborhood of Total Royale able to send their kids to that school, which was intended to be the academic institution of choice in that neighborhood, because simply it's not affordable. So that's, that's kind of where I am at this point, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm curious, from Basis, what's the student, what's the intended student population of the school?
My apologies.
Okay. Can you tell me, Brian, how many students are intended to go to the school, as it's fully built out?
If it's fully built out, we actually anticipate it'll be far less than the 1,500. We anticipate it's probably going to be closer to about 900. So we don't know for sure, obviously, which is why we didn't reduce the number, but we think it's probably closer to that number than it will be the actual 15, which is probably true of any school that would end up going there, although I guess this is the only school option we've got, so.
Okay. And when you mentioned scholarships, did I hear 10?
So it depends on how you want to approach it. So we got to operate the school, we pay our teachers more, they, the higher quality education, the equipment, the materials, everything else that goes there, right? So that costs. So we did an analysis to come up with, if we did 10 half scholarships, we could do 20 quarter scholarships. Again, it, we can work that out with, if you wanted, it gives more people different opportunities. As the course of time changes, as you get these million-dollar homes in Total Royale, the folks who are in those homes that, that wouldn't need them necessarily, so we don't want them, but then we have more village people, village residents, excuse me. And so those are the, as soon as I said it, I, I, I can't, yeah, I had to pull it back there. But that was the number we could come up with to try to accommodate something.
And then those who aren't scholarshiped can get state vouchers? Is that what I'm understanding?
Anyone can, regardless of income, regardless, I mean, the state, the state voucher system was passed so that any single resident has the opportunity to use it however they want.
And it's, it's roughly $8,000? Is that what I'm understanding?
This year, yeah.
Okay. So you've got 1,500 students, 10 can get scholarships, and, and some can get a portion, right, of that 30,000? When that becomes an eligibility thing, which then leads to access. And so all the students who we're talking about in this community don't really have access, if they're, if they, their parents can't afford everything, and even if they subtract the $8,000 from the vouchers, and maybe 10 students out of your 1,500 get a scholarship, you've got lots of kids in that neighborhood who probably can't afford it, which then eliminates their choice. They don't, they're really, there's a blockage to the choice. And so as a, as, as thinking about choice, when, when the tuition price tag becomes the barrier, they don't have a choice. And so I would not be in favor of a change for that reason.
Any other questions, comments from council? Any final comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, look, I, I hear what you all are saying. We're trying to do what we can here. We do want to bring, this will be the first Basis school in the state of Florida. It's a big deal, it's a big deal for everything around it. We do hear what you're saying, we know things change over time. There isn't a charter school coming here, you heard that tonight. And so, and it's interesting in...
Why do you keep saying, hold, hold, hold it? Why do you keep saying that? That is not what we heard tonight, okay? We heard from the developer, that's not what we heard tonight. I just had a problem with you keep just saying that there's going to be no charter school, because you're saying it?
No, sir.
No, because there are market issues? Well, they're going to have to get worked out. No, I'm just saying, this is the third time you've said that. I really have a concern with you making that kind of comment on the record, because you have no clue about what really can happen and what won't happen.
Mr. Mayor, I'm reiterating testimony that was provided by the charter...
This is not testimony. We heard tonight from the comment cards, all right, we heard the developer was right there, he didn't say that there would not be, we couldn't do a charter school, he wouldn't be able to do a charter school there. What we heard was that there are market conditions that have changed. That's true. Everyone knows after the COVID era, a lot of market conditions have changed. But they're going to have to work through that and deliver what we promised for our people. So I don't appreciate you keep proclaiming there's no charter school option.
I am merely reiterating the testimony that was provided by the charter...
Continue with your final comments, please, thank you.
I'm trying to, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So I'm reiterating what the experts in charter schools have told you, is that there aren't charter schools coming. Mr. Rodberg told you, he's tried to market this, and there was no market for the charter schools. They've told you the greenfield charter schools aren't working. We know that three charter schools in this region have closed. So yes, I understand what you're saying. We are trying to make the best of this situation, we are trying to work with you. It does fit very well within the character of Total Royale, particularly when you consider the numbers that Mr. Tuttle himself raised tonight, what he talks about with the high quality of the retail, that he has included... quality of the retail, um, that he has included, the examples that he used. Of course, you're not going to hold him to every single one of those examples either. Um, so what we're asking is a very simple thing. There is no change in impact from this school from what's approved, and that's what the evidence is, and we just asked for the approval tonight.
Okay. No further comments from members on council? Go ahead.
I'm, one of the things the vice mayor brought up, and, and I do think, I mean, for me, this is the thing that's going through my head, is he brought up the change of the character in the community. And, and I do think that it will change the character of the community, but is it going to change it enough? I mean, each, each one of us has to come to our own conclusion about how it's going to, because we do, I, I think there's definitely evidence, um, that it will change it. Is it going to change it enough? I, I mean, that's going to be each of our individual decisions, but I, I don't know, maybe it's good lawyering. I, I don't know that it's been proved that it would change, but I, I do think there is proof of change, but I don't know if it's enough, in my opinion, to say no.
Going along those lines, just thinking about it, so I did go to private school in Miami, and, um, thinking of the neighborhood and high school, it, it was a, a very quiet, we had buses, but we didn't have a lot of traffic, and we could walk or ride our bikes. Going back to what Councilman Valentes was just saying, we, I'm thinking, what private schools did we have in the village? Ideal School. I couldn't afford to send my child to Ideal School, but it was packed, and we had lots of people there. It didn't have an impact on traffic, it didn't have an impact on the neighborhood, it didn't bring down the value. So I don't, listening to what staff said, as far as does it meet all these criteria? Yes. The issue I have, that I've said from the very beginning, is the affordability and the access to all of our residents. So I think of my responsibility up here, in the best interest of our residents, is, it is a, I love the concept, what can we do to make it accessible for our residents? So you guys are the experts in that, and I will let you make that decision, but I don't think, it's not going against anything that we've already talked about, is it a detriment to different things like that? And we've already had a very high and expensive private school in the village that was full.
Go ahead. Yeah. Uh, so one of, one of the things that, um, the mayor was talking about was, uh, market forces changing over time. Uh, you just mentioned it, there were three charter schools closing the area. We know of one in particular, and, and Mark, you talked about it, right? Know that school well. Um, it's one of, one of the best charter schools that I saw personally, and I got to know it pretty well, and I was disappointed that it closed. Good news was, another great charter school moved in. Uh, so my point, though, is, as things change to cause that to happen, to say absolutely no way, ain't going to happen, charter school's not coming, I don't think is a valid statement. There are just so many things that, that actually change in an economy that will encourage, allow, and by the way, adding 1,600 units and families that live in those units is something that I think is a significant factor in the market. So if, if you're going to, is it all right for him to come back up, or would you prefer not?
I don't, no, I don't see the point, to be honest with you.
That's fine.
You want to, come on, come on up. No, no, I, I hear you, I hear you. Okay.
Okay. We've got some wonderful public schools. And this charter school wouldn't have been assigned a boundary to Tuttle Royale. Anybody that moves to that address would be assigned to Emerald or one of the other great schools. So across the board in Palm Beach County, only 15% of the parents elect to put their children in charter schools. Only 15%. There's 22,000 kids in public schools, there's 193 in the public school system. So to me, Palm Beach County School District does a fine job, and they've got some wonderful schools, and you have some wonderful schools right here. So those folks that elected to move in there, plus apartments only generate about two point, the generation rate's about .25. So it would have only generated, if that followed the curve, that whole complex of 1,600, which originally wasn't 1,600, when we say we all decided what it was, it's grown by 30% and gone high end. That's what it, we all know has happened. So to say we all agreed on this 10 years ago, no, we all know it's morphed into this high end deal. Point is, it would have only generated 400 kids. Garden walk-up apartments don't generate families. Statistically, based on Palm Beach County's school district trip generation rate, comes to .25. So if we had 400 kids and 15% of their parents were inclined to put their kids in a child, in a charter school, we're talking about 60 children. There's a lot of people that'd be happy to go Emerald Grove. What you folks are saying is the public schools here aren't, aren't worthwhile. This idea, this vision, that we might have thought there'd be a 1,200 kids that would all go there, if the operator had kind of done a poor job, nobody would have gone there. And we've seen lots of events and lots of reasons where charter, our charter operators don't do a good job. At this school over here, they, when I opened it, it had 800 kids, and it had dropped to 600.
Right.
Over here, to, over here.
Mark, I appreciate some of the facts that you seem to have at your disposal, that you just shared with us, but I don't appreciate is insinuation that we don't think our schools are good here in the community. And that comes from an education advisory board guy who's been hanging around with these schools for more than 10 years. So thank you for that input, but I, I, that was, that was...
I think we should have had the education advisory board weigh in on this, because these folks moving these apartments can go to Western.
So we should have weighed in, thank you very much, okay?
And one thing I'd like to point out about the charter schools, uh, two of my children did go to Western Academy for middle school, and again, another reason I voted for this, another reason I thought this was a good thing, wha, what about Renaissance and what about Western Academy were different from what's going on in Tuttle? Oh, there's no complete neighborhood around those charter schools. And I think it's a big difference if you have, for example, my children all went to Cypress Trails Elementary, that's in the middle of a neighborhood. All those kids are, not all of them, because I dropped mine off, but the kids in the neighborhood there were captured. Now, given, they're, they're going right to the public school if they want to, but I, I think with a charter school in a neighborhood center is a different ballgame than, you know, only 15 or whatever percent. I think, to me, as, as a parent, and what we have, and knowing the charter schools in the village, this would have been a different thing, but that's my two cents, sorry, Mr.
Okay, fine. Any other comments, questions, members of council? All right? If not, then I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny, uh, the application, uh, based on, uh, an impact on, um, or the, the compatibility and impact on the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood. Is that a sufficient statement?
Writing, um, just so that, I believe that is, uh, F7 in the criteria.
I can't tell from that, but...
Okay.
Or, it's, it's the second bullet on the screen that we're looking at right now.
Second bullet on the screen, yeah.
See a second?
Second.
You got a second?
Second.
We have a, um, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Who, to you? So you're saying you approve this?
I'm saying I, I approve it based on staff's presentation.
Okay, you? You approve? I'm just making sure that you're clear, because the motion is to deny.
Correct.
All right, but you don't want to deny.
Correct.
Okay. So Diane, let the record show that a motion of 3D2 denied the agenda item R1, okay? Okay? All right.
So I think that moot's number two, Keith? Because we couldn't get an approval for the site plan that was existing with the master plan?
That would be inconsistent, they can't be inconsistent, so I, I would agree, if, if you agree as well, yeah.
It moots it, it basically is a denial of both at that point, so I mean, we couldn't, you couldn't vote yes, legally couldn't vote yes once that was done.
Having voted...
And I'm, I don't want to waste all your time.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have to do an item R2?
R2 is contingent on R1. Since R1 was denied, there's, uh, as agreed to by the applicant, it has become a moot issue.
We thank you for all the information that was provided, all of the, the testimony provided this evening, um, but I think, as I said, uh, this is not about whether or not this, you have a quality product that you want to put out. This is about this particular location and what we've, we, what we've decided we want for this location. Thank you very much.
And we look forward to bringing basis to Palm Beach County as soon as we can.
Well, I, listen, you're free to look at other potential sites within the Village of all Palm Beach, but you also should consider potential sites in this great town right next door to us called Wellington, so, thank you. All right, moving to agenda item R3, it's a public hearing to consider application number 23-186 and ordinance number 1044 on second reading. The applicant is seeking a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation of one parcel totaling approximately .235 acres from the village's open space land use designation to the village's industrial land use designation for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. Uh, this is not a quasi judicial, so, Rafi, you...
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, this slide illustrates the location of this property. The proposed map amendment is compatible with the adjacent land uses and consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. The local planning agency considered this application on February 27th, 2024, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Village council considered this ordinance on March 21st, 2024, and voted to approve by a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. This is the second reading.
Do you want to make any comments?
Need to get sworn in?
This is not quasi judicial.
Andrea Kaiser, here with Kaiser Legal, here on behalf of applicant. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be before you again. I think you've heard me speak plenty on this, so I'm just here to answer questions and, again, effectuate the agreement that we have with the village.
Diane, we, any prior, um, public comments on agenda item R3?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R3, so I'm closing public comment on this agenda item. Any questions or comments from council? If there are none, since this is the second reading, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R3 was approved, five to zero. Good luck, thank you.
She's got another one.
She's got another, she's not done yet.
Welcome back.
This is a public hearing to consider application 23-187, an application by Bar Education, Inc., and approval of ordinance number 1045 on first reading. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation of one parcel totaling approximately .235 acres from the village public's ownership zoning district to the village industrial zoning district for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive, and this is a quasi judicial, so you will have to be sworn in for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll let your, uh, reading of the agenda item constitute reading of the ordinance by title. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Andrea Kaiser, on behalf of applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
None.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, this application is simply assigning a zoning district designation consistent with the future land use designation and of the parent property. Staff feels that the proposed zoning map amendment designating the parcel as industrial general is compatible with adjacent land uses consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, zoning code of ordinances, and will not exacerbate any existing public facility capacity deficits in regards to roadway network, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water, recreation, and open space. The local planning agency considered this application and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
The applicant choose to make any comments?
Uh, well, I thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the council members. I'd like to state, uh, thanks, staff and, uh, Professor Davis. I'd be remiss if I didn't do that. Same comments as the previous agenda item, just here to effectuate the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Diane, any prior, uh, public comments on agenda item R4? Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comments on this agenda item, so I'm closing public comments on this agenda item R4. Comments and questions for members of council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved, five to zero.
Thank you kindly, see you in a few.
Good luck, okay.
I, I was going to say I'm chopped liver, I got professor chopped liver at some point, I guess, over here.
He's professor, she's agent. Okay. Okay. Agenda item R5 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-129 and ordinance number 1042 on a second reading. An application by Urban Design Studio seeking the deannexation of parcel of land totaling approximately 3.742 acres, more, located on north side of West Weissman Way. I know that guy. Approximately 1,780 feet west of Sandsbury Way. Um, this is not quasi judicial.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the second reading of this ordinance, and if approved by village council, the parcel of land will revert back into the unincorporated Palm Beach County. Staff has reviewed this request and feels that the owner of the property is better served by deannexing back into unincorporated Palm Beach County, and therefore is recommending approval of this application. The local planning agency considered this application on February 27th, 2024, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Village coun, council considered this ordinance on first reading on March 21st, 2024, and voted to approve by a vote of five to zero, and again, staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Diane, any prior public comment requests on this agenda item? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R5, therefore I'm closing public comment on this agenda item this evening. Uh, this is the second reading. If there are no questions or comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Approve regular agenda item number five.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
You called for the vote, I just want to make sure Mr. Applicant doesn't have anything else to add, I'm sorry.
Nothing else to add, uh, we look...
Usually you always say you like the presentation done by...
Job, you know, you can't complain. Plan on getting into, um, the county shortly after this to help the affair prepare their master plan.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Fine, no, no, that's, you're doing your job, no problem. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R5 was approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item R6 is a public hearing to consider landscape waiver application number 23-128, and approval of order LW-23-05. Application by Cutler and Herring on behalf of, uh, Andre Associates Limited Partnership for consideration of two landscape waivers from section 15-131 sub D sub 1 to allow for a 10-foot landscape, landscape buffer along the west property line, where village codes requires a 25 feet, and to allow for 11.5-foot landscape buffer along the south property line, where village code requires 25 feet. For a property located at 1301 World Palm Beach Boulevard, this is a quasi judicial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the applicant is here for the next item as well, so I'll swear him in for both and take ex parte's for both, uh, in the interest of time. Your name for the record, sir?
George, Mr. Mayor, with Cutler and Hearing.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, sir, and I'll turn to the council for ex parte's on, uh, items R6 and R7.
With staff. Staff.
The applicant, Cutler and Hearing, on behalf of Andre and Associates, is requesting a landscape waiver, two landscape waiver requests. Um, the first waiver is from section 15131B1 to allow for a 10-foot landscape buffer along the west property line, which village code requires 25 feet. A waiver to reduce the required buffer width by 15 feet. The buffer will contain all required landscape materials. The buffer will contain all required landscape materials. The applicant contends the location subject to this waiver is located on the western side of the property, abutting a portion of land on the property where construction is not feasible. Staff is recommending approval of this request. Waiver one in general concurs with the applicant's assessment. Staff believes that this is the minimum waiver necessary to allow reasonable use of the The second waiver is from section 15131B1 to allow for 11.5-foot landscape buffer along the south property line where village code requires 25 feet. A waiver to reduce the required buffer width by 13 and a half feet. The applicant contends the location subject to this waiver is the southern landscape buffer, which abuts the driveway entrance to the plaza. The necessity for this waiver is in response to the western property owner's acquisition of the driveway, therefore is not considered residential property. Strict adherence to the mentioned code requirements is neither feasible nor logical. Staff is recommending approval of this waiver request number two and generally concurs with the applicant. Staff believes that this is the minimum waiver necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application at the regular meeting on March 26, 2024, and recommended vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Diane, any prior public comment requests on agenda item R6? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R6. I'm closing public comment on agenda item R6 for this evening. I have a quick question, Ray. This is the old Dunkin' Donuts site?
Yes, sir.
And what's going there now?
Chabru'ski's. It's an Italian restaurant, pasta, pizza. They're currently located in Westlake, and they're looking to have a second store or another new store here in Royal Palm Beach. I've heard it's really good.
They're in Westlake? That means they're new in the area pretty much.
No, it's in Wasatchi.
Is it? On the way to-
Wasatchi, Westlake.
I don't get out much, so.
Way west.
Listen, another pizza place in the village. I hope it works out. Okay, if there are no comments or questions from members on council?
Actually, just real quick, I just want clarification, Bradford. With this, the reason why they need to come in for a landscape waiver, it's because of something that the council did for a previous property, correct?
The, on the south, along the south property line? Yes. Along the first waiver request, it was not of our action. It was just site constraints and an efficient and effective traffic flow pattern on the site. There were similar waivers that were given to the property just north where they built the new Dunkin' Donuts. That's why staff is recommending approval, is that we've seen this before in just north of this property here.
Okay. And then the applicant is increasing vegetation that is in that area? Is that correct?
They have the same amount of landscape material that is required by our code, it's just the width is different. It's less than what our code requires.
Any other questions? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R6 was approved five to zero. Okay, agenda item R7 is a public hearing to consider application number 123-127, an application by Cutler and Herring on behalf of Andre Associates Limited Partnership and adoption of resolution number 23-46 confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking site plan and architectural and artistic review approval to construct a 4,090-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining, associated landscape improvements and signage for a property located at 1301 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. Everyone's been sworn in already for this, so Bradford.
Great, thank you again, Mayor. This is the site plan approval for the same site that we just went over for the landscape waivers. Here is the site plan. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan. The new 4,090-square-foot standalone building is highlighted in red, and the outdoor dining, 540 square feet, is highlighted in blue. Access to the site will be provided from two full access points off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Waterway Plaza, Internal Drive. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, color, materials, and landscape plan. Here is an illustration of the landscape plan. It meets the landscape requirements except for the waiver one and waiver two. This slide illustrates the proposed building architecture, color, and materials. Again, a few more pictures of the architecture. In reviewing the application, village staff considered conformity with chapter 26 of the village's code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project makes the requirements for the general commercial zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, and maximum building height. And overall, the proposed site plan improvements meet all the village's requirements for this type of use in the general commercial zoning district. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application, and the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on March 26, 2024, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
I can't like to make any comments.
I have prepared a presentation. I couldn't possibly improve upon what Bradford said.
And I didn't pay them, I don't pay them anymore to say these.
There are a couple additional points related to signage and some minor details that I could add, but if you'd like to see the presentation, I could certainly go through it.
I'm satisfied with the wonderful presentation that we got from Bradford.
Just real quick, then, is it any different than those photos that we just saw, or is it gonna give us a different perspective?
Nothing's different. Really, the monument sign was one point I wanted to make. There's a large existing monument sign out there, which is actually, it would eventually conflict with the proposed Lakeside Landing Monument sign.
Right, right.
That large existing one is proposed to be removed, and the smaller monument sign just to the north of it would remain for the restaurant.
Does this have a drive-through?
No drive-through.
That was my question. So, can I follow up on that?
Old school, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, following up on the drive-through, while you all don't have a drive-through, we've had some interesting experiences with the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through and that vacant area that you will now occupy.
It's going to probably exacerbate-
Is that likely to cause a return to the traffic problems we had with Dunkin' Donuts?
We don't anticipate it exacerbating the Dunkin' Donuts traffic. We hope that it will help the Dunkin' Donuts traffic. We'll keep our fingers crossed on that. But that's how we evaluate. We don't feel as though it will exacerbate the Dunkin' Donuts traffic.
Well, I just don't want to even return to what we had initially, which was out onto Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
It was bad, yeah.
I think it's hours of operation, correct?
Yeah, keep an eye on it.
Yeah, it's not going to make it worse. Now, the new Dunkin' Donuts hasn't gone out into the right of way yet because we put, and caused another problem, but the problem is on-site. That drive-through is at the very far northwest corner of that store, so they have to go, they're on-site quite a bit longer and can stack quite a bit more before they get to Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The problem that caused is if you're parked in those parking places and you're stacked back, it's hard to back up and get out.
Or if you want to go down the park, you can't get in.
It gets, it's harder to get in. Right. But it does have the bypass lane, but it's only 10 feet wide, and it's hard to use that to get into a parking place and get out. But down and they get their donuts and they're moving along.
Yeah. Ted, I just would hate to see, because, again, that vacant area, I know I've used it to go into Dunkin' Donuts to park. And if it's no longer, it'd be a vacant area.
Yeah, the trucks use it too now.
I'm just a little concerned about the impact. Overall, I'm not, I love the idea, what you're planning to do, that's great, that's fantastic. I just want to make sure we've considered and have a plan so that we don't wind up with the problem that we had at one point in time. If it's a change in operating, whatever, just so long as we have a plan to deal with it.
There are cross-access easements across both properties that allow that access, so if there is overflow of the drive-through lane from Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, it is permitted across this property, but generally, your hours of operation, your Dunkin' Donuts prime hours are going to be in the morning, and the construction will not be open at that time.
What time does it start?
I believe they do have, they are opening for lunch, but I couldn't confirm that right now. But I believe at most-
But at 8:00 AM?
No, ma'am. Yes. Good, thank you.
So it's well past the point of, yeah.
Before we take another questions, were there any prior public comments for agenda item R7? No?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R7. I'm covering, closing public comment tonight on agenda R7. Any further comments and questions from members on council?
I just, sorry, just one question about the outdoor seating. As Lakeside Landing goes in there, we're far enough away from residential?
The outdoor seating is actually located on the north side of the building, so it's well-screened on all sides. That would abut residential.
Perfect. Just wanted to say that on the record.
Yep.
There are no comments, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R7 was approved five to zero. Good luck.
Thank you very much, all. I would just like to add, I know it's been a long meeting, but from the discussions that were had, it's very clear that you care very much for the community and are representing well. So thank you very much for what you do.
And I hope, I hope as another pizza place, is that primarily pizza what they sell, or is it a full menu?
There is more than just pizza on the menu. There are specialties or pizzas.
I hope it works out, okay? Well, you've got to have Bruski's. Okay, thank you.
You better than him anyway. And you can tell Don said that.
I will. Thank you.
Agenda item R8, a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1038 on second reading, amending village code section 15-2 to add a new definition for the term artificial turf. Section 15-141 to eliminate the current prohibition on the use of artificial turf and add a new section 1544, artificial turf, to establish certain performance standards for artificial turf. And this is not quasi judicial, so you're up.
So this is the one we've all been waiting for. So this is the second reading. I won't go through the details of this ordinance, but what I will do is give you a little bit of an update on. I did speak with the gentleman that was at the meeting. He did have some concern about the blade length. For the sports-style turf and the pet-style turf, the blades were at, the 1 and 1/8th was too long for what his product was and the performance of his product at that length. So we did add into the code where we were doing a blade length of 7 eighths of an inch, which fit what he was selling and what his market, when his product is. And so that's the thing that we have changed in this ordinance from the last time to this, to tonight.
May I ask a question about that, Bradford?
Ma'am.
Are we tailoring it to his product only? I mean, won't there be other artificial turf companies that make it a little longer or a little shorter?
This is a minimum standard, so we just made more people qualify.
Yep. So, yes.
Thank you.
Correct. No problem. The local planning agency considered this ordinance on February 27, 2024, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Village Council did approve this, vote to approve this application on first reading by a vote of five to zero, and again, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Okay. Any priors? No prior public comments on agenda?
Would you change the nature of this whole meeting?
Wait for that.
Poor Diane.
Right, any, any hands raised?
No, they're not.
I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R8, therefore I'm closing public comment on agenda item this evening. If no questions or comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item eight. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show, R8, agenda item R8 was approved five to zero. Agenda item R9 is a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1041 on a second reading, amending village code chapter 4, 15, 16, and 20 at multiple sections to replace the reference to former occupational licensing licenses with the current reference to business tax receipts. This is not a quasi judicial.
Mr. Mayor, this is second reading, as you said. This was just a cleanup item to address a change to state law that preempted regulation of occupational licenses to the state, so this changes antiquated references in your code from occupational licenses to business tax receipt, which is the current nomenclature. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Any prior public comments?
No.
This is all for the record. I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R9, therefore I'm closing public comment at this time on this agenda item. If there are any questions or comments from council, if there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R9. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R9 was approved five to zero. Agenda item R10 is approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the First Amendment to agreement for a purchase and sale agreement to provide a six-month extension to AMG Business Enterprise, LCC, to obtain the required approvals under the agreement. You want to explain this?
So this item and the next item on the agenda, these are, there was a timeframe for receiving the entitlements, going through our process, getting the comp plan, rezoning, site plan, plating, and the list of entitlements that were in the agreement. We find that we just need a little bit more time. For whatever reason, the applicants or the purchasers just need a little bit more time, and this gives them that time.
Do you support it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Diane, any prior, am I using the wrong word?
Never be able to do that again.
Public comments on agenda item R10? No? Okay. Ray, any hands raised?
No.
I have not received any comment cards, public comment cards on agenda item R10, so I'm closing public comment on this agenda item. Questions or comments from members on council?
I do have, and I know the applicant is only asking for six months, but considering that it is the same property and the next agenda item is asking for seven, I'd like to make it where this one is for seven months as well. I know that they're further along in the process and they may not need it, but at least this way it is still consistent together.
Are you making a motion saying that you recommend seven months instead of six?
Unless there's any other discussion you want?
Well, notwithstanding, any other comments, questions?
Now I'm curious as to why they're different.
Because a little bit further along in the process, and we, strategy, we sometimes still have that sense of urgency with these timelines, so it keeps them moving rather than giving them. I'm not saying that this individual would, but some people take up all the time that you'll give them.
You'd like it to stay?
Pardon me?
I'd like it to remain six months?
I would not, I would never go against-
Too short in the seven.
That wasn't a question.
Work does fill time a lot. I get you, but I see her point, too.
I don't think that, I think from discussion with staff and with council is that they will not need that extra month, but just to keep it consistent, and it is a linked property, just in case.
So, if there are no further questions or comments, I'll look for a motion.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, Mr. Kiefer is here, just make sure that he doesn't have any objection to the extra month, if that's what the council requests.
Okay.
Okay.
You can't take the extra month, we're just gonna give it to you, though.
Items that were requested, so they requested six months, so that's what we brought in the staff report to you.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number ten with the additional month extension.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R ten has amended, was approved, five to zero. Okay. Agenda item R eleven is approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the First Amendment agreement, purchase and sell agreement to provide a seven-month extension to Antrim's Investments, LCC, LLC, to obtain required approvals under agreement. Catch your feet.
He's worse than Diane now.
We, we agree with the presentation, that was good.
Is the applicant, is the applicant here who wants to make comments? Go ahead.
Hello again. So, just in our particular case, as you know, we've been coming here before you for quite some time and on multiple occasions, processing multiple applications. In our case, our applications are all interdependent on each other. So if you recall, last month, on March twenty-first, we got final site plan modification approval for that three-hundred building, and we wanted to ensure that pedestrian or vehicular access or circulation wasn't changing, because that's gonna impact the way we site plan the neighboring property. So we just needed, what we did was we took the same timeline it took us for the site plan modification for that property, we took that timeline and just tacked on a few months, because we need, the agreement requires us to get a building permit as well, and that takes a time for submit and review. So that's our case and the reason why there's an additional month for, for that permit.
Okay. Diane? Any, no, no, okay. Ray? Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Not received any public comment cards on agenda item R eleven, therefore I'm closing public comment on that agenda item. Take questions or comments from council, if none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number eleven.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, let the record show agenda item R eleven was approved, five to zero. Okay.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now to appointments, agenda item R twelve is appointments of two residents to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Diane, you're on.
Okay, so I would like to move to reappoint Lauren McClellan and Cara Derry to regular seats with terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-seven.
Do you have a second? In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R twelve was approved, five to zero. Agenda item R thirteen is appointment of five residents to the Recreation Advisory Board. What'd you do, fire everybody?
No, in fact, I love it, they all wanna come back.
We don't, we don't have them staggered?
We do have them staggered, so we have three more that expire.
Happened here, but okay.
Yeah, I think there was a bulk of them that we had in the beginning, but we have three more that renewed at a different time. So I make a motion to reappoint Sandy Rubin, Sean Fitzpatrick, Dennis Seibert, John Redorian and Robert Birch to a regular seat for two-year terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, let the record show agenda item thirteen was approved, five to zero. Agenda item R fourteen, appointment of three residents to the Education Advisory Board. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Nancy Panaya and Jennifer Sullivan to regular seats with terms expiring two thousand and twenty-six. I'd also like to make a motion to reappoint Sergio Herrera to the alternate seat, number one, with term ending two thousand and twenty-six.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, let the record show agenda item fourteen, R fourteen was approved, five to zero.
Oh, what a night, a night.
Okay, now, now we're down to...
See you next month.
The final two agenda items which apply to our village manager. The annual review evaluation and merit pay determination for the village manager. I trust all of you have had an opportunity to sit down with the village manager and have a review of the evaluation process with him. If there are no questions or comments, are there any?
We should have the staff do this instead of us.
Okay, we could talk about that another time, but I just wanna personally say that I think our village manager does an outstanding job. I put him in the elite class of village managers, so. And with that, unless there's a question or comment, that concludes the review. Now, part of the review is for the, we're supposed to determine a pay raise?
Yes.
Okay, with that, then my recommendation would be five percent. This is a, a raise in pay, not a, like a bonus payment.
Increase in salary.
Increase in salary, five percent. So I'll look for a motion and a second for that.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? We have no appeals. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R fifteen was approved, five to zero, and the appropriate raise. Go ahead, question?
Can he, the mayor made, sorry.
No, Jeff did, Jeff made the motion.
I made the recommendation, my recommendation was to the council.
Sorry about that, thanks.
He made the motion.
It's all good.
I've been well-trained by Keith.
It's all quick, it's all quick.
It's a long night.
Oh, really? Come on, okay, our final item.
Yeah, it is.
It is what, it's what, also all of you, I was told, have had an opportunity to discuss the, what the manager would like to see in his next contract, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so we don't need to go into those details, because all of you have had those one-on-one conversations already, so we know what was, what's included. Consideration of proposed six employment agreement for the village manager to be effective on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and to end on May fifteen, fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-nine, which would make that a five-year agreement, okay? So, given all of the items that we've already discussed individually with the manager, are there any questions?
I, I just have a couple quick, oh, one question and one comment. So the, one of the bullet points, it says reflects a five percent merit pay increase. That is what we just...
We just voted on that.
Okay. But merit pay is different than salary? Because I was under the, it is the same, it is considered the same. Okay.
It's an increase because of good merit.
I just wanna make sure the terminology, because there's a difference of the bonus, right, it's not the cost of living, it's not a bonus, I thought we were calling bonuses merit pay, this is salary, it was a salary increase, and that's why I wanted to make sure the difference.
Right, but we usually do the bonus as, instead of merit pay and increasing, we, we normally have done the bonus aspect in the past, but this is different, and I think going into the final contract is, for me, that was my understanding of the reason.
Okay, so that's why I just wanted to clarify, so that it was that, and it's not the additional five percent as a cost of living increase type of merit pay type thing. That's why I wanted to understand the difference between the two.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And then, no, just my other thing, and I don't know, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask council of this before, but I don't have an issue, a, a concern or anything that he's asking, that the village manager's asking for, but as far as a succession plan goes, can we put a caveat, not, something in there that says that somebody has to be hired prior to the end of the five years in that position?
I think, well...
I have, that was part of the strategic plan, do a succession plan, and me trying to understand exactly what the council, because I know we've had this conversation several strategic plan years, and, and I realized your concern was not necessarily the other hundred and fifty employees, but my position. So I do have a draft, I, I do have a draft succession plan that I will be presenting to you before, before May first. I should be finished with it early next week and can get it to you before the end of next week. And that plan identifies exactly what you're saying, and, and it, I'll give it to each of you, have, and then we'll have plenty of time to, to go over it.
That's strategic plan.
It's, it's pretty detailed as far as how to handle the transition, whether I get hit by a bus tonight, or whether, or, or whether...
She's you in front of one.